Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lamoore Planning Commission regular meeting. On today, August eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, the time is now seven P. M. If I could have everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. This point in time, I'll officially call the meeting to order and begin with the roll call. Commissioner Clement?
President.
Commissioner Gouge here. Commissioner Edgell going here. Commissioner Mead here. Commissioner Franklin?
Here.
And Commissioner Day is here, and will the record reflect it? Commissioner Brewer is not with us this evening. All right, that takes us into item number three, which is the public comment. Public comment will be in accordance with the attached policy. This time is reserved for members of the audience to address the planning commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. As recommended, the speakers limit their comments to three minutes. Each and it is requested that no comments be made during this period on items on the agenda. The commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. Prior to addressing the commission, any handouts for commission will be provided to the commission secretary for distribution to the commission and appropriate staff. The public will have an opportunity to comment on items on the agenda once the item has been called and the chair opens the items to the public. So at this time, is there any public comment? Seeing none in the gallery, were there any online? And anything through email or on Zoom? All right, thank you. Okay, so that takes us to item four, the approval of minutes from the regular meeting of July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Have all the commissioners had a chance to review the minutes? And so I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mister Chair, there's no other comments to be made. A move that we ask the approval of minutes for the meeting on July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. I'll second that motion.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Clement and a second from Commissioner Franklin. Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Gouge?
Aye.
Commissioner Edgell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mead?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay, that takes us to item number five, the report and recommendation. So a request by C V Housing LLC, Brad Fugman being the agent, to extend approval of major site plan review number two thousand and sixteen dash zero-three, tentative parcel map number two thousand and twenty dash zero-one, minor site plan review two thousand and twenty dash zero-three, and accompanying planning entitlements for one year. The project is located on the southeast corner of Pamperamona Road and South Route forty-one, A P N zero-two-one dash six-six-zero dash zero-three-one. Mister Brandt?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioner, Steve Brandt, City Planner. This item, most of you remember, was approved by the commission. And after it got its plan approvals as they were starting their design and construction, they ran into some issues with the soil and have had to make some adjustments. It's kind of set them back a little bit, and so they have asked for a one-year extension of their entitlement permits that the chair read. So their expiration date isn't until November twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-two, but they made the request a couple of weeks ago. We, staff understands the issues they're going through. They're having to do a lot of redesign, and so we're recommending approval of a one-year extension. That would put the new expiration date at November twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-three, which means, for them, what means they need to be submitting a building permit prior to that date, so.
All right, thank you. There any questions, comments from the commission at this time?
Mr. Edgell, have most of the issues been resolved, do you know?
They, they were looking for, you know, because some of the area just can't be built on because of the soil. So they're looking, okay, well, what could, they looked for a while, they were looking at what could they do? Could they, they put a parking lot on it? Could they put garages on it? Because it's part of the multifamily portion of the project, so. Are they gonna, would they just make it a big park for the community? So I don't know exactly what they've settled on, but they took a while to do that, so they're kind of behind on their schedule, so. And as you know, the commercial part was part of it, too. That doesn't have soils issues. But just, you know, the process of finding tenants and things like that, so.
Any other questions, comments? Is there anyone from the public that has a question or comment regarding this item? And nobody on, no emails or anything regarding it? Okay, so if there's nothing more regarding this item, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I would recommend the extension as your question. I'll second that motion.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Mead and a second by Commissioner Franklin. Commissioner Mead?
Aye.
Commissioner Franklin?
Aye.
Mister Clement?
Aye.
Mister Gouge?
Aye.
Mister Edgell?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. All right, so that takes us into item six. Another report and recommendation, a request by Victory Ferris Lamoore, the agent being Tim Palmquist, to extend approval of besting tentative subdivision map number two thousand and five dash dash zero-two, Victory Village Track eight forty-five, accompanying planning entitlements for one year, A P N zero-two-three dash five-one-zero dash zero-five-five. Mister Brandt again?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so this, this project also had a number of obstacles put in front of it after the planning commission gave its approvals. I think some of you were here in two thousand and six when this was approved. This may be one of our longest-running tentative maps. So, well, no, it is one of our longest-running tentative maps. But the, the map as it was originally approved was much bigger. There were some issues with the Navy. The Navy and the developer came to an agreement, and there's a portion that's still valid and that the Navy is not going to oppose. And, but going through all of that, the time has passed. There were, there's the automatic extensions and there's the discretionary extensions, and by already in the state law, this would be the last extension that would be available to them. So, so if this is approved tonight, you'd be extending the tentative map to, and we're going to say August seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, and that's just because August sixth is a Sunday. And we knew that this would be the last one if it, if it, if the final map didn't get submitted. So we put in the, in the staff report, the items that would need to be submitted to make sure that the map stays valid. And Mister Palmquist is here, and I could be talking with him about that some more, too. But staff has recommended approval of the one-year extension, and then that would go to August seventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
All right, thank you. And then just for clarification, for anyone at any point that might be looking through the agenda packet, the map that's currently in the packet, that is not the proposed, what we're looking at, it's a fraction.
Only a portion of that, so if you look at the aerial photo that says site location, the area that's outlined in red would be the portion that would have homes built on it.
Any questions or comments from the commission at this time? Any, any questions or comments from the public?
Hello, my name is Tim Young. I live on Bush, down by Bush and I T. I'm just curious, will it be apartments or will it be houses?
So these are scheduled for multifamily, right? Single family, okay. And we have Mister Palmquist with us who can maybe, maybe elaborate a little bit more on your.
Thank you.
And real quick, I'm sorry, sir. Mister Young, were there any questions that maybe you wanted to tie in that maybe Mister Palmquist could kind of take on all at once?
People are, people are more tending, if it's a home, to stay apartments. People tend to move in and out a lot and don't really care about the area too much sometimes. I know that's a generalization, but it seems to happen that way. So hoping if it is housing or something, or apartments or something that's more set up for a family-type situation, just.
Thank you.
You mean, planning commissioners, planning commissioner? Good to see you again. I am. About this briefcase, when I started this project, and I vowed that I would not replace it until I got this project finished. So my wife is really hoping this is the last year, because she gets embarrassed when I walk around with her. This is fifty-one homes. We have had a long path. We are proud of the fact that we were able to strike a deal with the Navy by which we started off with two hundred and twenty-four homes, where we reduced it down to fifty-one, and recreated a parallel closer to the base that allowed the rest of this West Hills development area to move forward a little bit more easily. And I'm glad to see that Lamoore is out there. We too have been struggling with some of the Edison power grids and our merchant builders that have looked at this deal or working their way through that. And I realize that, starting tomorrow, we'll have three hundred and sixty-four days left to figure it out, and I would just greatly appreciate your approval tonight. Questions?
Yes, I have a question. You have some infrastructure already going in as far as sewers, sewer system?
So what we had did as part of our deal with the Navy, we were, we had up to four hundred thousand yards that we could take out to create the environmental detention basin, and then that get dedicated to the college. So we did the mass grading already. We had worked up with the Oakland office of the, oh, I'm sorry, who does? We had worked, we had gone up to Oakland to work with FEMA to address the, the base flood elevation when they had lowered that due to the Kings Creek thing, and then we got them to, or they had raised it, excuse me, so we got to lower that back down, which again benefited everybody. And then we went ahead and per our agreement with the Navy, and which is also a third party to that agreement, is the West Hills College District. We went in and took the dirt per our agreement and got our pads out of the flood elevation. And as part of that process, we put in water lines per plan that would give us water onto the site that we could use as part of the grading operation. So we did fire hydrants and so on and so forth. I, to be honest with you, can't remember if we did sewer at the same time since we were there or not, to be honest with you, but we have water and the mass grade.
Thank you.
I'll reserve the right to come back if there's any other questions.
Right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? And then bringing it back to the commission.
This isn't a question, it's a comment, and I think Mister Palmquist might bring it when I make it. But I think I saw that case when it was brand new back in the early two thousands, the first time you came to my office to discuss this potential project. It didn't look like that then, so. I hope we don't get to see it again also. Thank you.
All right, so if there's no further questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion regarding the item at this time.
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two dash ten approving the one-year extension. And I will second that.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Edgell and a second by Commissioner Mead. Commissioner Edgell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mead?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Gouge?
Aye.
Commissioner Franklin?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. All right, that takes us into item number seven, which is a public hearing. Item is in regard to major site plan review number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-one, conditional use permit number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-one, and administrative use permit numbers two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-one and two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-two. A request by Bottom Line Development with the representative is Orlando Ramirez. Construct a convenience store with some tobacco and off-sale alcohol and food deli service with the drive-through and a nine-pump fuel station, a car wash facility with the washing tunnel and a self-service vacuum area, a quick-service restaurant with the drive-through. The site is located on the southwest corner of Bush Street, Nineteenth Avenue, within the city of Lamoore, A P N zero-two-three dash four-two-zero dash zero-one-eight.
Pardon me, Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a quick disclosure. I don't think it's any real big deal, but just to make sure, our representative for this matter right now is a gentleman, Orlando Ramirez, who is a gentleman who I advised, and he was a planner at the city of Clovis for many years, and since, probably between two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and twenty, I handled many matters as our law firm is city attorney for the city of Clovis, advised Mister Ramirez on many things, and so just figured it might be better to be safe. I'll disclose that to the commission, but with that having been said, I don't see any potential for a conflict or any problem that will arise.
All right. Thanks, sir. I agree with that. I don't think there'll be any kind of conflict of interest of any nature. Is everyone on board with that on the commission?
Yes.
All right.
All right. So as the, as the chair said, this project is located at the southwest corner of Bush and Nineteenth Avenue. It is, I guess you could say it's phase three of what we're hoping to be an integrated shopping center at some point. The first phase would have been the DeVita Dialysis Clinic, second phase being Dollar General, and then this one fits kind of right in between. So from the beginning, I'll start by talking about access. We, the staff, and this goes back to even before I was here, because the DeVita was approved before I was here. The intent was this would be an integrated shopping center with the idea that there would be cross-access, that you could go from site to site without having to go back out onto the street. So I think we, we, we set that, we set the intention with DeVita and then with Dollar General, we made it legal and actually had a cross-access easement and parking, shared parking agreement put in place for the site, including the, what are the vacant sites? And so this project would follow within that. So the site plan is designed to allow that cross-access so that you can be, like, you can go get your gas and then go over to Dollar General and not have to go back out onto the street. You go over to the Dialysis Center. And then, you know, when the project continued, when the site continues to develop, we'll keep doing that. So eventually, it'll be one integrated shopping center. So the, there's only two new drive approaches in this one, one on Nineteenth and one on Bush. The Nineteenth Avenue drive approach could be limited in the future if we need to put a median in Nineteenth Avenue to control left-turn traffic. So that could be a right-in, right-out at some point. It won't be that right now. But Dollar General has an entrance that will likely not be restricted. And so again, that's another reason to have all of these cross-access easements to make sure that the public can get in and out to the places they want to go in the shopping center. As the chair described in the description, this is convenience store, car wash, quick-service restaurant. The, just for the record, the, the restaurant and the convenience store are allowed uses in the neighborhood commercial zone, which is what this site is zoned. It's the fueling station, the alcohol sales at the convenience store, and the car wash that require conditional use permit approval. And then the drive-through lanes require administrative use permit approval just to make sure that they're meeting the standards we have for the design of drive-throughs. So I can talk about that. We did review the drive-through lanes. They meet all the standards for width, for length, for amount of stacking. So, so we're recommending approval of the administrative use permits. The, the other uses, we looked at the parking, it meets the parking standard. We looked at the architectural and site design standards, which it does meet that. You can see in your packet, they submitted some elevation plans and some bird's-eye views that show what the buildings will look like. In terms of operations, they submitted some operational statements, which are in your packet. One of them being the car wash being intended to operate from about eight A. M. to nine P. M. For lighting, they're proposing to do lighting that would be solar generated by solar power, so each light would have its own little solar panel on it. So that'd be something that's kind of unique and a different look than what we're, what we're seeing. But they'll definitely be lower than the maximum height for lighting that we have. One of the things we really looked at was the car wash potential for noise. They submitted some noise, a noise study, and then some decibel readings. And using our calculations and the standard calculations for doing decibels and then putting those against the city standard. It's a lot, that's all, I'm not going to describe it, it's all in your staff report, but basically, we made the, to terminate you, everything's a, is the estimate, because we don't, we're all estimating what the noise is going to be based on different things. But it appears from the estimates and from the calculations that this will be underneath the city's standard for, for noise for both the commercial area onsite and the residences across the street, because, you know, as the distance goes, the noise gets smaller. There's a lot of other things that play into noise. The cross-traffic on Bush is going to scrub some of the noise from the car wash. But, but again, it appears that you can support a finding to say that the noise standards are going to be met. That being said, if there is some concern, I did put some other potential conditions in there if you're interested or if there's some concerns. Related to alcohol sales compatibility, there's some standards in your resolution, or sorry, it's not standards, findings in the resolution, finding that there's the public needed necessity for the alcohol sales. And we believe it meets all the findings that are in the ordinance for determining that. The ordinance also has some standards for fueling stations, and we looked at that, and the site plan does meet those standards. We did have something that the, the public works looked, noticed kind of at the eleventh hour. They made some changes to the, with the Bush, Bush Street because of the intersection. We think that's going to be a pretty busy intersection someday. And so they're wanting to widen the street a little, a few feet. And so that required then us to move the sidewalk and request an easement in their landscape area for utility. So if there needs to be like a utility box or a street light or a fire hydrant, then that can be in that easement. But it doesn't change, it doesn't change the site plan, it just means there's an easement across the landscaping that may need utilities. So we are recommending approval. There's one resolution for all of the permits, and there's findings in the resolution as well as conditions based on what we are in analysis. Be happy to answer any questions.
So real quick, two questions initially. The first being within the recommendations from the Air Pollution Control District is part of the agreement to be, that the developer adheres to those recommendations to mitigate the, the issues that were brought up by the district?
Yeah, there's, there's a part called the indirect source rule, which, with every develop, new development has to go through that process with the air district, where they determine whether there needs to be mitigation fees paid. So yes, they will still have to go through that. Some of the things the air district said apply to larger environmental documents, and we, we felt that this project qualified for the infill categorical exemption. So, so some of the things they said we, we didn't do because of that. I think they were assuming we were going to do like a mitigated negative declaration or something like that. But regardless of the sequo document used, they still do need to go through the I S R process with the air district and pay those fees.
And the second one is, are there any projections for water usage from the, the car wash side of the, of the development? And if so, or even if there's just a ballpark as to like what kind of impact that will have for, for city water?
Sure. I, I don't know how to answer that, maybe the applicants can answer that, but I, I'm pretty sure that the water is recycled, so it'll get used again and again, but.
Part of the documentation talked about the solar, which you've addressed. The other thing mentioned was charging station for E Vs. Is that included here and where is it?
Do we? Christie, do you know, is that a requirement now in building code to have E V station, commercial sites? Yeah. Yeah, so that'll be, it's part of the building code.
Okay.
So I don't know that they specified the exact site, but that'll be done.
I'm just curious. So curiosity is what kind of charging stations and how many of them? The, the other one is a comment. I really enjoyed looking at the architectural renderings. They are, they're different from what I'm used to seeing, not just in Lamoore, but kind of around the area. Very appealing. So congratulations whoever did that. I hope you can pull that off. It looks nice, and it's, it's different, so.
Any other questions or comments before we open it to the public?
I have a question. So they're going to be entering, so potentially at Dollar General, at the north end of their parking lot, correct? You'll join the project?
Yes, they'll connect to Dollar General at the north end of Dollar General.
What about the south part of their parking lot, or does it not? Does it end still there at Dollar General?
If I remember the Dollar General parking lot, it wraps around and then heads west on the south side of their building? And so when that area develops, there'll be a connection there.
Okay. Is that that third phase you were talking about or first wave?
I guess, I mean, I'm just making up the phase numbers. I mean, DeVita went first and then Dollar General, and now we have this project, but there's, there is still some vacant land left.
I, I get you, okay. So back to the noise.
Yes.
On the car wash, you end the car wash with the blow dryers. And so you've got people over here across the street, let's just say thirteen, fourteen Bush Street. Every time that car goes, a car goes to that car wash, that noise, you know, that just starts. And they have never heard that before, I'm sure. And so now it's going to be going from eight A. M. till nine at night, a car wash. So has the city or anything ever thought of any kind of sound wall or anything if potentially that becomes a problem in the future?
Well, yeah, like I said, I think, and I think I, I mentioned it in the staff report, is this, the sound is a weird thing in the ways. You have to be careful how you, how you address it. If you put a wall up, it doesn't, the wall doesn't absorb the sound, it just bounces it somewhere else. So if we potentially put some type- potentially put some type of wall between it could bounce it maybe deflect it back into the rest of the commercial area, but you just don't know for sure till you start playing with it or hire an expensive noise analyst. But I mean, that's part of your pre purview is to see, you know, is that an issue that we need to deal with? I I will tell you and that I didn't, I've worked on use permits for car washes before, and I've seen that the sound that comes out is is a cone shaped. It doesn't just spread out everywhere like waterwood. It's it's very specific. So there are a couple of houses right across the street. Those will be the ones potentially most affected. The ones farther to the side probably won't hear it nearly as much.
I gotcha. So probably just two or three homes right there. Okay.
I just want to comment as as a sound engineer, that ain't gonna happen. It's gonna, it's going everywhere.
Oh, really?
It'll come out as a cone, but it spreads very quickly.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the commission before we open it to the public? Take Steve. Okay, so the time is now seven twenty eight. Now I'll open and open this item up to a public hearing at this time. So if we have anyone from the public at this time that would like to to ask a question or comment on this item, you can please approach a podium. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. We can get that. Okay, maybe they can do some explanation that'll that'll cover any questions.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Orlando Ramirez. When Seth Ramirez with Bottom Line Development, there is a slight resemblance because he is my brother.
I'm a little bigger.
I want to thank you for your time. First of all, what we have here is a very innovative, creative project. This is the model for all of our car washes and convenience centers and mixed use centers. This is the first of its kind and we have several in the city of Fresno that we're doing with the same architecture. They will follow this project. So this is the actual guinea pig for all of these and we plan on doing this throughout the state. We have over 120 that we will be working on over the next year and a half, but this is our first. So we're pretty excited. This first in the city with this architectural model. To answer your question regarding the water usage. The average car wash, when you do a car wash at home, it wastes anywhere from 50 to 80 gallons per car wash out of your residents. These car washes are so automated, so point on that they use anywhere from 22 gallons for the smaller cars to 26 gallons for your F four F two fifties. So it's a significant savings. As far as reclaiming water, really can't use the same water for washing your car, but we do have a replay reclamation system that uses it for the pre-wash. You have those two people with the wands in the entry there. And it also pays the building at the end of the day as well. We do have some filtration that does that. The rest of the water does go into the city services. So but we do complete, try to keep it as as automated as possible. Was there any other questions you have for me?
I believe you had a question earlier about the ISR process. That's the indirect source review from the air impact assessment. And so we are having a qualified engineer prepare that study for us and will be subject to the fees as part of that mitigation effort. As well as the electric vehicle charging station for the California green code, we are required to provide at least conduit at this point. They haven't required full on charging stations yet, but we are required to to plan for that and provide the conduit. So which we are doing that somewhere between the convenience store and the fueling canopy, you'll see an island there where there's several parks installed and that's where that area is planned to be at this point.
Thank you.
So for that point, the kind of how many are you planning to have? I guess initial taps like one or two ready at the go or just like stub it off at that that court?
Yeah, we'll probably stub it off at that court and prepare for the future, whether that be those that entire, you know, island, which is I believe is about seven stalls. But it just kind of depends at this point.
So this car wash, is this is the man car wash?
It's an automated, completely automated.
Well, well, at the onset at the entry, there's always two staff members that pre-wash your vehicle.
Would you compare it to like the water drops? Our wash?
Not too familiar with water drops, but if you've ever been to like a surf through or an express wash, ride and shine, those those type of users, similar to what what we propose.
And there had been another issue regarding the noise. Can you describe what the like what the actual noises will? I was gonna say it look like, but I guess it's more appropriate to say sound like as as people are entering and then exiting the car wash.
At the entry, it is really a significant amount of noise when you enter a car wash, because everything's going inwards and it's just the wash system. When you exit, of course, the blowers do turn on and the decimal rating 10 feet away is a little bit high. It's at eighty, ninety decibels, I believe it is. But as it goes further out, it dissipates. Fortunately, what we have here and what we have in probably six of the other car washes we've done is in Arturo Street, such as Bush Avenue. We have several lanes of traffic. That helps dissipate a lot of the sound. So by the time it reaches the residential areas or any property line, it has dissipated significantly where it's about fifty nine, fifty five decibels, which is below your noise status for the city of Lemoore. And we had studies in other cities that we provided to Stephen and staff that verify that as well.
So no buzzers or anything like that at the end?
No, no buzzers, no music is allowed, no amplified music, none of that. That was 10 years ago. They had that issue and they realized that 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 doesn't work with the neighborhoods or with adjacent commercial tenants.
Any other questions or comments for the applicants?
Thank you.
Thank you.
She Young. Good evening. Well, first I'd like to say thank you. I'm not sure if any of you were on council here back in 2009, but your first time buyer's program helped me and my wife get a house here. And we've been here now since December 2009. Also, I'm not sure if the lady that works for the Lemoore, her name was Brooke. She helped us also get a solar system that the city helped kick in and the state helped kicked in and our electric bill this year, plus we also put up a large pool. A whole bill for the whole year was $54. So thank you again, Lemoore, and thank you for in God we trust. Okay, now the bad part. Do I want this across the street from my house? No, I I don't want this across from my house. But that's okay, because I know it's going to get billed. It's been in the planning for a long time. I talked to people that I used to work on the events here a million years ago. Lorenzo Newell was out on the football field. So anyways, long story short, yeah, walls, walls bounce down back. I was hoping maybe for a dirt berm with plants, plants will absorb sound, dirt absorbs sound. I noticed the one on nineteenth and coming down is a big dirt berm plus a brick wall. So if they don't want to do a wall, that's fine. I was just hoping I see in the plants, the bushes and all this, and I was just hoping for a dirt berm to absorb the sound with bushes. And and also the time, I think he said it will be closing at nine or 10 o'clock. Is that? And is there anything that's going to be 24 hours? Will the pumps be able to be used with a credit card after? Once it shuts down, it shuts down. Okay, well, that answered a couple of questions. Anyways, that's the only, that's the only thing that, oh, also if they, if nineteenth and Bush, the intersection there could be a blinking red light from like midnight to five in the morning or 11:00, or if you guys could do some kind of survey, because the times that it it was turned, it turned into a drag strip. Okay, you're coming past South Valley, you're right there at Boston, the light turns yellow and you're going sixty five by the time you go past my house. Now you're like, look at me like, that old gray haired dude, don't know what the hell he's talking about. No, trust me, I drove bus for 30 years and I could tell how fast the cars going when it goes past my house. So anyway, yeah, if you could do something to slow down that stuff. And the reason why I say midnight to four or five in the morning, I don't know. I don't know if it's guys going to the base and they're leaving a minute before they have to be there or what it is, but just they fly down that street at nighttime because the light stays green. Ninety percent of the time it's green going like west to east. Yeah. So if they could make that a blinking red light sometime midnight to four in the morning, 11:00 to six, whatever. It wouldn't back up the traffic and it would still flow good. The only time that the traffic backs up and is in the daytime. That backs up down to right in front of our house. Anyways, once again, thank you, dirt burns and bushes. I appreciate trying to sound reduction. And thank you for closing it. I don't know if the city council put what what time businesses could be closed or open there. I was, I was, I was looking to see is that is that the building that's going to be closest to the corner?
Yeah, that would be a restaurant.
Oh, okay. And the restaurant will be closing it? So the, so the, so the. Boys, thank you, Council. I appreciate to let me give me, give you my word. And like I said, dirt, any dirt burns or bushes or anything that to dull down the noise. I know walls bounce it back. I was thinking about the big brick wall. It's already there behind the Dollar General. And to know that can't be absorbing tile because I know they got, that's expensive. But anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jan.
Signs right there.
Are there any, any emails or Zooms or anyone else from the public that wish to pose a question or comment regarding this item? Okay, so at this point I will close the public hearing at seven thirty eight. And I will bring it back to the commission for for further discussion.
So I have, I have a couple of concerns. The first one, of course, is the noise. I believe that depending on how close that car wash actually is, it could still be an issue with the residents along Bush Street. My other concern is that we just recommended a gas station not that far from there and there's three others already in place. And I can, I can't help but think this is only going to take business away from them. I don't see how it's going to draw more business. Because people are getting gas and getting gas. So I'm wondering whether we're over saturating or that area between between forty one and nineteenth Avenue, too many gas stations. I hate to see the the ones that we have in place already start losing business because of the fact that we recommended another one. That's all I have.
Any other questions or comments?
Have a comment. I just with the car wash, I mean, immediately when I saw that, when we got the packet was just how it at the end, how it faces those few houses right across Bush Street. I will never second guess anybody that puts a design together or anything. There's a lot that goes into it. When an architect or anybody puts these site plans together. But I just worry the city will be facing this issue later. There's a difference between the noise is acceptable to where there was never a noise there to begin with. So that's the problem with the people that live across the street is an acceptable noise is a noise that's always going to be there. I don't know. That's just a concern I have. This will, will this eventually go in front of the city council after if if it leaves us, it does? And that'll, it does not.
Unless it's appealed. So for our experts, would adding a berm, would that mitigate the the noise issue? By by a significant amount?
Depending on how high it is? Yeah, definitely.
And if so, is is that something that that developers would be going to put into place?
We would be open to buring that. In fact, in the city of Clubas, we work for whenever we have any drive-through use. We typically provide a two to three foot berm with landscaping above that. Landscaping helps mitigate the visual, but it doesn't mitigate sound, even though most people think, tend to think it does. But we would be be more than willing to do to burn it up two to three feet to provide that factor that you're concerned about.
Now, what what kind of effect would that have with a three foot berm? Have enough of a of an impact to mitigate some amount of the noise?
Depending on where the dryer, how high up the dryers are. There, if they're above that, a lot of that noise is still going to go above that. It will, it would eliminate some of it. How much?
We'd be willing to berm up across the front of Bush Avenue with three feet and then additional landscaping above that, which heavy shrubs as shown on our site plan as well. So we're willing to do that.
I think that a three foot berm with landscaping on top of it would be acceptable to me personally. I would not want to see a higher berm such as we have on the north side, because those things are high. I think they're very unattractive. What appears to be a very attractive development here, I think would be lessened, if that's a decent way to say it, by anything that high and that wide for that sound. This is zoned appropriately. And I think that when a person moves into an area or purchases a place, one of the things they ought to do is look at what could go on around them zoning wise. And all of a sudden say, no, we're not going to allow that to happen. Well, it's already happened. So let's make it look right, look appealing, mitigate it to the extent that we can.
And I appreciate your comment. Our concern is that, in fact, is the architecture. The architecture is very pleasing. It's very inviting for the community, hiding it behind a three foot berm takes away from it visually. And that's a concern, but we understand that we have to be attentive to our neighbors' concerns as well, but we do have a quality product here and we hate to hide it behind a three foot berm or a wall.
Questions or comments?
Hey, Steve, if that's where the commission wants to go, I was working on some wording for you to consider a three foot high berm with dense bushes shall be added to the landscaped area between the car wash exit and the Bush Street sidewalk.
Is that really going to make a difference though? Or is just something to appease us?
Yeah, that is the conundrum is that, you know, adding something, you know, to try to mitigate a very valid and honest, you know, issue, but then is that going to make enough of a difference because putting that in then also subtracts from one of the appeals of the development? So it is a bit of a.
It's a cost for them too.
Right. So notices have been sent, of course, I'm sure to all the people on there and nobody's here besides this one gentleman here.
Correct.
Yeah. So like Commissioner Meeks said, anything higher than three foot is not going to be appealing whatsoever. So I'm not so sure putting a three foot berm is the answer. I don't think it, I don't think it's going to help enough to make a difference. In that case, I think it should be just let flat because it the berm would have to be higher than that.
Yeah.
She Young. Okay, so.
I mean, unless further testing can be done to really make sure that it's going to be an issue for those people living there.
The thing too about putting the three foot berm and you've got a long Bush Street, you have an exit and an entrance. Now you don't have clear vision coming out of there on the Bush Street. So I think putting any type of berm there whatsoever and having a driveway would be more of a hazard.
So looking at other options, are there are there other ways to mitigate that issue? Are there other types of dampeners or anything that could be?
Well, an issue that could be done, and not an issue, but again, I don't want to second guess anybody that's architect they put in to hear exactly. You know, how they feel they can utilize the space here. Is there a chance or anybody has thought about, or is there another design where you take the car wash and it is put to the south side, southwest part? And it runs east to west or west to east? So the noise, when it enters or exits, exits the building, it hits the side of the gas station and it's not facing at all any residential zones. Is that a possibility? Do you see what I'm saying, sir?
Yeah, we actually started with a dis- Yeah, we actually started with a design that was parallel to Bush Avenue, but just circulation wise and having reciprocal access requirements, it just did not work. So this is our second and third reiteration of this site. Based on that, I've done a lot of car washes in the past and I know the concern I set up there as well. So this is the optimal location regarding circulation and some of the restrictions we have regarding reciprocal access and reciprocal parking agreements in place.
You mean circulation for the vehicles?
For vehicles and the cross, cross access agreements.
Yeah.
Across the back there. One of the things I'd like to offer, I don't know if you can see it, but we have the curvature as you're exiting the tunnel. We have that curvature. If we could potentially do a four foot wall just around that curvature, so it sends the sound in a different direction and incorporate our monument sign into that as well. So it's an attractive part of the, as a design. So that might be a valid option that you might consider as well. So now we have a four foot wall, but it's also becomes a low profile monument wall. And it redirects the, the noise to the east that way.
So a four foot tall wall, it would just be on the curvature.
Just on the curvature as you egress.
Yeah, because that's what I'm worried about. It's just that noise just coming straight across.
Right.
To, and I know that the people that live there are probably not here at this time. You know, a lot of people get letters and they're like, oh, it's from the city. I don't know what this is. And they throw it away or something like that, but.
So as you egress on the west side.
So that's something you'd volunteer and you're, you're offering, right?
Yes, sir.
And then also just for note that major modifications to the site plan, not really in our purview at this point. We're mainly looking at the site plan as is with some minor modifications. Anything over, if it starts to get a little, a little too crazy, whether it's major rearrangements, then we would have to take a different route to pursue those types of options.
The option that he's presenting, is that something that can be done here tonight? I can't.
Yeah. And typically walls of that height don't require permitting process, but because it is a sign, we will go through a formal sign review process. And that will be a part of the, the package. So we could wrap it up about ten feet coming across parallel with Bush Avenue.
Okay.
And that would mitigate the sound, yet provide for an opportunity for monuments.
Probably a run of ten feet on the curve, four foot tall, and you would make it part of your monument sign.
That's correct.
Steve, do you know that if the monument sign can be right there, I mean, would it meet the zoning and everything? Yeah. It should be okay, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for volunteering.
Of course.
You're listening to, you know, the concerns that we have and I like how you immediately offered something like that.
Well, you're welcome. We think it's a great project and we want to please enable it as well. We understand their concerns and we want to mitigate those as much as possible.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Ms. Jan.
In the last ten years, we've had two cars ricochet off the curb because they weren't paying attention to going down the street. That's why we don't, that's why we don't park on the street. If you review the police reports, you can see the accidents that have happened on the cars parked on the right hand side being hit. The parking lot there where the canopy is, where the gas station is, all the driving people driving around. You can see it on the data. Can't think of the actress's name. Drove into a house in LA today. A three foot dirt burn, if somebody steps on it, either somebody coming down bush, going over the sidewalk, they're not going to shoot into that parking lot. And vice versa, somebody in the parking lot, which this is an elderly community, Navy base retired. You hit the gas instead of the brake, you're going to hit a dirt burn as they're going across the bush, going straight across street and ending up in my front yard. I know that sounds a little crazy, but it happens. That's it.
All right, thank you.
I believe with our suggestion that would eliminate the meat for a boom, so that would not be an issue at this point.
So what, one question real quick, that we really had covered, but is there any reason that the car wash couldn't be reversed?
I'm sorry?
Is there any reason the car wash couldn't be flipped ninety degrees?
Uh. We've looked at various opportunities and this was actually the best layout. We, we had our draftsman and our architect work on this full time. I looked at it several times as well, based on my experience, and this was the optimal placement for.
Further questions, comments? Any questions at this time? There's no further discussion. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Wait, would the motion include?
The proposed amendments?
Yes.
So just state that in motion.
Okay. Steve, do you have a way to, sorry? Yes.
So with the wall, I got a four foot wall, she'll be installed around the curved exit of the car wash.
Okay.
That's, I think we understand where he's going with it. I could make it more specific, but I think we understand.
That would be added to the conditions of approval.
Yes.
Christie, can you go back up one more? One more, where that last picture was, right there. So it'd be right around that curb, right on the
Yep, right there on the right side.
Was there anything?
Yes, I'll, I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve major site plan review number twenty twenty two tag zero one. Conditional use permit twenty twenty two tag zero one and administrative use permit numbers twenty twenty two tag zero one and twenty twenty two tag zero two with the four foot high wall around the curb.
A second.
Yes, and to adopt the resolution.
Yeah, do you need a number for the resolution number?
It's resolution twenty twenty two dash eleven.
Yeah. Oh, and, and also move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty two tag eleven. Approving major site plan review number twenty twenty two tag zero one conditional use permit number twenty twenty two tag zero one. Administrative use permit number twenty twenty two tag zero one and administrative use permit number twenty twenty two tag zero two. And according to the findings and conditions in the resolution with the four foot wall.
I second that.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Franklin and a motion by, or a second by Commissioner Couch.
Commissioner, before we go to vote, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Steve, were the, the owners of the, the gas stations west of this proposed development, were they all notified that this was, you know?
Probably did not give them a formal notice, no, because they're farther, they're farther than three hundred feet away. Yeah. We do put a notice in the newspaper. Don't know how many people read those. The what? Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so I'll motion on the floor for, by Mr. Franklin and a second by Commissioner Couch. Commissioner Franklin?
Hi.
Mr. Couch?
Hi.
Mr. Clint?
Hi.
Mr. Chagall?
Only because I'm concerned about the fuel limit of, you know.
Mr. Me?
Hi.
I vote I as well. Passes. All right. That takes us to item number eight, the director's report.
Because that's me, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director's report. Ms. Olson is on vacation this week. Yes, that's what I was going to get to. The biggest news is we had our LaFco hearing a few, a couple of weeks ago. Or was it last week? It's been a long week. And so that, that brought the sphere of influence amendment, the approval of the MSR, the Lacey Ranch annexation, the, and the two annexations that we call Bath and Kasaka, which are related to the cannabis cultivation. All of those were approved without any negative comments in like forty five minutes. It was amazing. So that was probably like a year and a half's worth of work for, for us to get those all to that point. And because they all had to wait for the sphere amendment, that's why they all got put on the same agenda. So so, so we're happy about that. The developers are happy about that. Both of them were there, represented there and yeah, they went through. So they'll be, it's, it's another few weeks and then they'll officially be in the city limits. We've got potentially, I mentioned the part of the, of the Bush nineteenth shopping area that's still vacant. Potentially, there's, there may be a plan for that coming in the future. We don't have an application yet, but we've got some hints that maybe that'll all get built out. So that would be the fifth, fourth phase of the project. What else is happening? What else did we talk about, Christine? There was one other thing I thought. Oh, we believe that we, the city got approvals for the use of the treated water from the treatment plant to be used for the cannabis cultivation. So we needed, we needed approval from the state to be able to do that, to get it down to tertiary treatment. And I believe we've got approvals. If you want to hear more information about that, you probably need to have Nathan talk to us at the next meeting about that. Because I don't know the details. I just know that, that it sounds like it did get approved. So what that means is treated water from the treatment plant that was, that right now is going in a pipeline out like ten miles to an orchard will instead be used here close for the cannabis cultivation. And it's treated to a tertiary level, which is not food grade levels, not to be used on, on food. So this cannabis will only be used for things like oils and creams and stuff like that.
What is the current water source for that? If they're going to start using this treated water, which I think is great.
Well, the, I mean, they're not growing yet
Okay.
in these areas. The, previously, the, the bath site had a small dairy on it and they were using wells, well water. So we, it's, it's been a while since that site's farmed and I don't, I don't remember, I don't know when the Kasaka site was farmed or if it was still being farmed, but potentially historically, we may be using less groundwater on those sites because of this new arrangement.
Oh, that, that's positive. That there's going to be less pumping.
Yeah, less pumping.
Well, for that use.
Yeah. And the water, the treated water, which was now being dropped off ten miles away, now gets dropped off here and goes into our offer.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. So a couple of things that are happening at a regional level, we're going through the housing element. Update in Kings County, the cities and the county all work together on one combined housing element. So that's a process that we're going to be starting soon. There's a consultant that's been hired that's managed through K C A G. And he then writes one document and will, all the cities will all get a chance to review it. And at some point, we'll bring that to you and have you review it. The housing element process is, it's, the housing element is part of the general plan, but it's the only element that the, that state law requires that the state gets to approve. So the process is, will, it'll get written, we'll bring it to you. We'll bring it to the council, the council adopted, then we send it to the state. And typically, because it always seems to happen, the state finds something they want us to change. So then we'll have to bring it back to you again. So here's the change they want, and then we can take it to council again. And we have to do all of that before December of twenty twenty three. So something to look forward to. The other part of it
Consultants are running the analysis right now?
It has, yes, there's been a consultant hired. They've started the analysis. We've given them some initial land use data. So one of the things, one of the key things we have to do is show that we have enough land inside the city limits to support the next eight years of housing demand. So the Lacey Ranch annexation was a big plus for that, that we got that in first. The, the other thing that's happening is K C A G is working on their regional transportation plan and sustainable communities strategy. That's something they do. I think they do that every four years. They update that. So the regional transportation plan is basically looking at the whole county as a region and say, okay, where do we need to be putting our future dollars for regional transportation? So at one point, the nineteenth Avenue interchange was at the top of the list for a few years and then it got built. And so now something else is on the top of the list. I bet you that the ninth Avenue interchange, potential interchange in Hanford is probably what's at the top of the list now in Kings County. So so that's a, so that's looking at the plan and it's something that the federal government requires in order to get federal money for regional transportation. The sustainable community, sustainable community strategy is, is like a companion document that shows that the land use that we're all, all of our cities are proposing is consistent with the transportation. So that, so that the federal government knows you're not building roads in the wrong place.
So that's really like an integration of those two documents to be able to, you know, for one, maximize the full benefit of the land use while reducing or mitigating urban sprawl?
Yeah, well, yeah, it does, it does minimize urban sprawl and it's supposed to try to reduce vehicle trips. So, so when you look at them together, what, what was happening when you, when you, for years, there was only a requirement for a regional transportation plan. And so it was like, well, we want to build a road here and we want to build a road there. And then, and then people started saying, well, you're just encouraging sprawl by building roads and making it easy for people to drive out farther out. And so by reviewing both topics at the same time, then you can start asking the question of, well, what if we, what if we didn't plan for growth in a certain area? Would that reduce the need for transportation projects? It may not work out that way so much in Kings County by the, because of the way we're, we're laid out. But I know one example of that played out last time in Fresno County where people were challenging some of the growth that was being proposed in the foothills. And saying, you know, we're not getting that much growth, but yet the roads to the need to get built to get there are very expensive because it's foothill roads. So maybe the county should back off and improving, approving housing in the foothills. That then became a debate and they had to figure it out.
Any, any update on the FEMA funded project about school?
No, I don't, I haven't heard anything new about that one.
Any other questions or comments for regarding director's report? All right. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item nine, commission reports and request. No, no, reports are requested this time? All right. So I just, just one kind of just a general comment. Two of them really. The, the first being a thank you to, to staff and, and commission and for, for people to take an interest, you know, the come, something comes across and you come out to, to speak about it on a, on a Tuesday night, you know, that, that has tremendous value to the way that our community has developed, you know, because if, you know, if, if you don't say something, then, you know, that can't be taken into account as to how to resolve those issues. So really appreciate that and appreciate the developers. So really appreciate that and appreciate the developers who are willing to make certain concessions in order to, to be neighborly. So that really, I'm pretty sure I'm speaking for all of us. That means a lot to us and we really appreciate that. Secondly, an unrelated topic, but I think it's certainly worth note. This weekend and the upcoming weeks, schools can be starting, you know, school started today a little more at the elementary level. So I just wanted to give a big shout out to all the educators, regardless of where you at, where you work at in the field of education. We really appreciate what y'all do for, for our kiddos and for our students. And we want to wish, wish you and your students and their families the best of luck this year to just study hard and get at it. And with that, that takes us to adjournments. I will call this meeting adjourned at eight oh six. Thank you, everyone.